Good evening, everybody. Madam Clark?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg here. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Bataclia.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. That's the notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And now we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council invited guests. This is the committee of the whole agenda. Tonight, we have Jim Magan, our CFO, who's going to review issues with a presentation from our bond counsel, Lisa Gorab.
Yeah, the city will be going out for a bond sale of $39,867,000 on March 28th. So on tonight's agenda, you know, you'll have two resolutions regarding the bond sale. But what we wanted to do is give you an overview of exactly what a bond sale is. So our bond counsel, Lisa Gorab, is going to do that for you.
Thank you. Good evening. Nice to see you all. Yes, the city has had short-term obligations outstanding to finance improvements and other obligations, and those short-term obligations are called notes, and they're rolled over annually. Unfortunately, the city has been rolling over short-term notes in a very low interest rate environment, so that has worked out very well, just in terms of paying a very low amount of interest on those obligations. Those notes have been out for a while. Interest rates are still low, possibly going up. So the administration and the financial advisor of the city undertook an analysis to determine what would be best fiscally for the city at this point. Oh, thank you, sir. So based on the interest rate structure and the outstanding notes of the city, they determined that it really is in the best interest to sell the bonds now. The bonds would be issued in two series. One series is $22,677,000, and that series relates to all the general improvements in the city. The other series is $17,190,000. That second series finances permanently the short-term tax appeals that you had out along with a $3 million settlement, which was approved by the local finance board. The second series of bonds is a very short series of bonds. Those are being paid off in four years, four and a half years. The first series of bonds, the general improvements of the city, is going to be paid off in 19 years. What this enables the city to do is lock in relatively low interest rates now, finance the improvements over the life, the useful life of the improvements, spread them over the impact over generations, and allow for the city to have a very level debt service levy, so there would be no increase to pay off these bonds. What it also enables the city to do is have a significant drop-off in debt service in 2022. So if there's a need to additionally borrow, that additional borrowing can be compensated additionally without raising new taxes. So we believe that the financial plan that was put together is a good financial, long-term plan for the city. The sale is scheduled for March 28th. It is a competitive bond sale. Again, when I use that word "bond," it's just a fancy word for an IOU. It's a loan. It's a long-term loan. So you're going to finance these projects, and the interest rate will be struck on March 28th, and the closing will be held on April 12th. Today, we had our rating call, which went very well with Moody's, and we expect to hear the city's rating very shortly.
S and P.
S and P. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just expand a little bit, first on the timing, you know? We've been talking about this, well, Lisa and I have been talking about this for a few years, and the bond sale is a little unusual because of our tax appeal refundings. We're tied to a maturity schedule that the local finance board gave us. So we felt that the time was good now because there's still enough left in those that it could make for, it could make the sale very competitive, something that people are going to want to bid on. Plus, what Lisa was saying in terms of the market, the rates have been great. Our rates have been fantastic the last few years, you know? But in terms of planning, when you're trying to look ahead, and when, for debt service, we're trying to look ahead 10, 15, 20 years, you know? Felt time was now, time was to go out for the sale, lock in at a low rate, okay? Market's been a little weird lately. Well, the market's been a little weird since November of 2016.
What did you try to say?
No, there's a lot of reasons for that. But that's what we felt, that take the uncertainty out, you know? And when Lisa said there is a significant drop-off in debt service in 2021, 2020, 2022, and the plan for that was, if you remember, when we did the major capital projects in 2016, we said that we aren't going to increase our debt service budget, okay? And people asked, well, how are you going to pay for the M&amp;M Building? How are you going to pay for the Johnson Park if you're not going to increase debt service budget? And that's the way that we're going to do it, okay? It was going to be a mixture of short-term financing, which we've been doing for the last few years, and long-term financing, which is what this is. And going forward, we still plan to continue to bond, probably going to be doing about $2 million a year. And what we'll do is, when the debt service drops off in 2022, then we'll be looking to pay off that debt. And this way, as Lisa said, we keep our debt service budget flat.
Right.
Which is a big component of our budget, and is a big part of the whole tax stabilization plan.
So the city's short-term plan was a great plan. It also happened to be a lucky plan because interest rates worked to your favor, they're still in your favor, and we feel that taking the risk out is a good idea now.
Question?
Jim, if you could just give us a little bit more of an overview. I mean, both of these items, both of these bonds incorporate some things that we've already gone out and sold bonds for, do they also, or notes, do they also incorporate any items that resolutions have been passed but haven't been funded yet?
Yeah. What it does is, you know, it pays off all of the bond anticipation notes that we have outstanding right now, you know? And these are the projects that we've been doing, you know, and then we've been borrowing short-term on, and also the bond anticipation notes for the tax appeals that we've done. But then we're also looking forward, you know? We know that, you know, what we're going to need for 2018 in terms of cash, in terms of 20, and also 2019. So I believe it was about $11 million of this, I think, was that the new money?
New money, about 10 to 11.
About $11 million of this $39 million hasn't been borrowed against, okay? And that's, that's the new money. And keep in mind, we're borrowing to pay off some ordinances for projects that have been long since completed, you know? There are ordinances from 2011, 2012 that are included in here, that have been paid for out of the city's cash fund, okay? And the reason that we need to borrow that is basically to pay ourselves back. It would be great if we could just forget about it, but you can't do that, you know?
It's $11,748,000.
Yes, 11,700.
And I think you said, and I know you said, that it has been our goal all along to be able to do this without having an impact to our taxpayers. So I think something that's very noteworthy is that by doing all of this, you're also adding 11-something million dollars to this that wasn't there before, and you're telling me that we're also going to be able to do this without having it impact our taxes?
Without increasing taxes, yes.
And I think that's something, a very, very valuable message for the public to see is that by having, thank goodness for Jim and thank goodness for Lisa, by, you know, by having the right folks here and managing this correctly, we were able to accomplish the consolidation at a good rate and also cover some additional projects without having it affect our taxpayers. And kudos to both of you and everyone else involved for pulling this off. It's great.
Can I ask you, well, the 17 million plus, how many years, I mean, we're going to go four years on that, on just that part, correct?
That's what we're permitted by the local finance board.
Right.
That's the tax appeals.
That's just the tax.
And the laws.
Right, and we had seven years max on.
Yes.
Four years, so actually, we're taking some time off of that then.
That's what we have left. We financed it, you know, because they were staggered, 14, 15, and 16. So we've had to work in so that none of them were financed for more than seven years. So one's issued for 14, have three years left, and nothing.
All right, good.
There was one other issue Ted just reminded me about. We, as Lisa indicated, we had our rating call with Standard and Poor's today, and one of the things I had talked about during the rating call is something I had reviewed with the finance committee yesterday, and that is an implementation of a target surplus policy and a surplus regeneration policy. Now, these two policies are things that we've been doing in terms of surplus, practices in our budget for surplus that we've been doing since 2014. But now what we want to do is codify them into a formal policy. They'll be on the agenda for the March 27th council meeting, okay? So we'll be talking more about it then, but the reason I'm bringing it up now is because we did talk about it with Standard and Poor, you know? We're at, we've spent the last four years trying to build our surplus up, okay, which was another goal. Now that we've accomplished that, we want to put these policies into place formally to make sure that we're able to maintain that.
Can you just give us a little high level where it was in 2013 and where we are now?
Yeah, the, back in 2014, our surplus had dipped down to a low of about, I think it was about 1.4 million. And in the 2014 budget, we had used, we utilized the million dollars of it for tax relief. Where we are now is we've got about 10.3 million in surplus, and currently, we've been utilizing about $3 million for tax relief, okay? And the plan is to continue using that going forward, and what the policies do is they want to ensure that we always maintain a healthy fund balance. It's something that looks very good on our bottom line, looks very good to investors. We're hoping it looks very good to the rating agency, and it'll really help us going forward in terms of redevelopment.
Yeah, good. We are doing better than England.
I'm not talking bad about other towns. Don't talk bad about me.
England. You know, that town is a really trouble.
For the record, most municipalities, or at least for the people that manage them, you try to maintain 10% of your budget. And candidly, Jim, prior to my service, has put you folks back on the financial path again, because obviously, I've heard some stories since I've been here of a few issues that occurred prior to my service and prior to Jim's service, where the city was not in good shape. But I have to say that, and I've worked in a few municipalities, City Hackensack is truly on a glide path to some real success, coupled with the redevelopment and the economic development that's going on in the city. Having that money, having this proper rating, which will obviously, you know, you get to a AAA rating, your life gets really pretty sweet along the way there in the financial market. So City Hackensack is on the right move. We're addressing our capital improvements and the conditions that we need to fix. We're almost on the cusp of purchasing another garbage truck, which was one of the things that we had committed to.
Right.
The other one that was reconditioned should be back shortly. So all of these projects are in place, and Jim's going to go over some guidance that come from you folks on capital improvements going forward for the balance of this year that we will move forward.
Yeah, just one last thing on the surplus policy. The deputy mayor had asked me to look into a few other towns, and so far, I've looked at four other towns in our immediate area. But what I'll do is I'll be providing those numbers for the next meeting when we do talk about it.
We'd like to see how we're doing against the order.
But as I explained at the finance committee meeting, it's really, each municipality is unique, you know? For example, in the, we're sitting right now at roughly about 11% of our prior year expenditures, okay? And just as an example, Fort Lee runs about 6.5%, okay? My opinion, way too low. Lowdy, on the other hand, runs about 35%.
Really?
My hand, my, my opinion, way too high, you know? Teneck is right exactly about where we are, at about 11%. And Paramus runs about 14%. But I'm going to check a few other municipalities and see where they stand.
Amazing to think we were down as low as really almost 1%.
Yeah, we were.
When we came into office. I mean, that's really where we were, so.
That was the address. Yeah, and if you remember, at the time, we had significant cash flow problems because of it.
The rating agency really did take note of those facts. They were very interested in, in that progression.
Good. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Does anybody have any more questions?
No, good job, Lisa and Jim. Thank you.
Okay, number two.
Yeah, the next item on, on the agenda was we were going to be talking about capital improvements. At the next council meeting on May, on March 27th, we'll be introducing the budget, okay? And usually, once we get the budget introduced, we want to, trying to speed up things this time, and immediately start working on our 2018 capital plan. And this coincide, where this it came from was Ted and I had a couple of meetings following the goal-setting meeting that we did last October, and we started to realize that in terms of capital projects, we have a lot of capital projects, an awful lot of capital projects, and the funding isn't so much the issue. We realized that what we need is more of a priority list, okay, in terms of, of what projects should be, be working on before other projects. So we sent out this, this project sheet, you know, into council packets, and what we're asking each of you to do is, if you could, put in what you feel the priority of each one of these projects is. The ones that are filled in already are the projects that are in progress, for example, the garbage truck that Ted spoke about earlier. What we're looking for is projects that you want to see completed in 2018 in the year column, if you could put 2018. And then of 2018 projects, if you could give us what your priority is. Priority A is something mandatory, something that absolutely has to be done this year. Priority B is something that's necessary, that should get done this year, but it's not mandatory that it gets done. And priority C is something that's desirable, you know? If we're able to get it done this year, great, and if not, we'll, we'll always look to next year. Okay, so what we're asking for is if you could just fill out the year and the priority level, give them back to us. You'll notice that there are no dollar amounts on here, and that's by design, and that's because we want you to understand that the funding isn't the issue, okay? It's the, it's the priority that we really need to know.
I'll just add, confirm our discussion. Age-two sewer separation for downtown is a, is definitely a priority A as far as being able to continue with the two-way street conversion, the streetscape efforts, and redevelopment downtown, so sure we'll get full council support.
I agree. I went back and looked at the May 30th, 2017 council meeting, because that's when this was discussed originally. I can't remember what brought it up, but I think there was some flooding issues in other parts of town. But, you know, at that time, it was made clear that you, you can't take away from this project money from, from the sewer separation, which is part of redevelopment, right? Which is part of Main Street, and that's the project that's going to bring money into the city. Take money away from that, or in other words, rob Peter to pay Paul. You can't take money out of that, stop that project, go another direction with it. It's not going to work. They're two separate issues. The Main Street thing was part of the master plan, part of the redevelopment plan, was part of what we sold to all these developers and the Main Street Alliance and everybody else. And, you know, I know somehow this project got halted, I don't know how, but, you know, we need to get that back on track. It's, you know, I know there was, deputy mayor had told me that you guys have a plan where we can still put the main sewer lines in. My concern with that is the sewer box, where are we going to hook the boxes up without, without interfering on the street? So, you know, I need to know what that plan is.
Yep.
Because if you're in the sidewalks or something, that's one thing, but to dig up the street, you know, the last thing you want to do is, you know, build a nice, beautiful new Main Street and then dig it up, put sewers in. But, you know, we got to get that back streamlined because they're starting on Main Street already. The works down by the courthouse already took that island out. They're, they're working down there, so, yeah. Not to mention, you know, that's one of the main parts of the sewers that need to be separated, which is a requirement. I mean, we're, we're one of three municipalities in the left, in Bergen County, and we've done our due diligence. We've been the frontrunner between the other two communities in getting this done. I want to keep it that way. I don't want the EPA breathing down our necks saying we're not doing our due diligence. But, you know, other projects, not saying they don't need to be done, you have to do them in the right order. Stop a project that's going to eventually, that is part of what's going to fund everything that's on these papers would be crazy, in my opinion. Anybody else? That's my opinion. Thanks. So you want us.
They heard my opinion loud and clear.
You want, you want us to just, for each thing here, you know, put a year that, you know?
Yeah, for example.
Some of it's going to be hard because we don't know the prices, so we'll probably have to call you individually.
Yeah, but just in terms of a priority, if, like, without thinking about the prices, you know, just as an example, the salt dome, okay?
Right.
If, if the salt dome isn't a 2018 project, you know, maybe it's a 2019 project, you know?
Well, I'm going to, go ahead, and I'm going to bring up something else which we're going to talk about, but, but our CDBG loans, all right, are under attack. It looks like Washington is going to try to stop that type of grants, all those types of grants, which would be devastating for this state because it's one of the few ways we get to pave our streets and do other local projects like we do. So, you know, that's going to play into the timeline. You know, if I knew, if I knew these grants were going to stop in 2020 or 19, I'm getting as many as I can in 18 or going for them. So these are things that we have to take into consideration, too, stuff that could be granted, or what, what projects would they be able to be used for? So, all right. We can do this.
You don't have to do it now.
Well, no. No, no, I know, but I'm looking like, I mean, like the Stipe Dog Park, we promised the people that had to be done this year, so obviously, we're all going to want that done, you know? Johnson Park's on its way. M&amp;M's already in progress, so, you know, we do, City Hall definitely needs our attention right away. I see the date's already in there, so I guess there's no choice on that one. We need that one.
Well, we have some issues.
But.
You know, David's going to get out of what he's.
And I think there's a lot of dependencies, too, on some of these projects that folks don't, maybe don't realize, like, for example, the salt dome, you know? If we're really going to turn that property around and sell it, that makes it much more of a priority than just, oh, well, it'd be nice to have a new salt dome. I mean, you know, plus, you know, the recent issues that we've, we've had with the EP on this. So there's, I think there's other contributing factors to some of this that perhaps Ted and Jim are going to have to, like, put on your hats, where you know some of these contributing factors and help us with that.
Okay.
So I tried to call 5 o'clock, you had to call 4 o'clock. That way you got enough time.
Oh, it's only two little pages. He could do that quick.
I get you a couple coffees.
On to number three.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
The next is a discussion, doesn't have to be today, because it's not, it'll be on for the 27th if you folks approve, is the Kids to Park Day proclamation request. There is a... National Park Trust is requesting Hackensack to issue a proclamation recognizing Kids to Park Day on May 19th, 2018. There are 456 cities across the United States proclaim Kids to Park Day last year, and this year, we would love Hackensack to join us all for the Eighth Annual National Day of Outdoor Play, which will be celebrated on May 19th together. And they're really just looking for a proclamation and acknowledgement from the mayor and council that they support this movement.
Okay, I'm all in favor of it, but I'm looking at around the date, which is, it might tie right into our May cleanup. Is that usually April?
It's May 5th.
May 5th? All right, but we can do the, we can do the resolution.
Right.
Ahead of time.
We can put this out for the 27th and.
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Are they asking us to do anything else in support of it other than the resolution, Ted?
No, ma'am. To my knowledge, there is a, a website, and it has a proclamation, proclaim the day and host the event. So we'll do some minor investigation here, but it lists in your packet all the municipalities throughout the country that are on board to do this.
I would go to Greg, give him the, the contact.
Got it.
Maybe we'll do something in, in one of our parks, get the kids down there and, you know, have some fun.
You and David, the recreation board, maybe they come up with some ideas of some way to celebrate this day a little bit, if we do a little something special for the kids?
This is May 19th. I thought, I'm not sure, but the Hackensack Riverkeeper had something on the 19th. I'm not sure if it's at Overpack Park or here in Hackensack, but I'll look into it to see if maybe we could tie in something with them.
Okay.
It's also baseball season, too. It might be a good day for something officiating.
True. Okay.
All right. Number four.
Number four is the Resolution of HUD Approval, 2017, 2018, CDBG allocation grant for reservicing our streets. Mayor, council, Hackensack wish to enter a grant agreement with the county of Bergen for a purpose of using $353,418 of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, awarded for the project for road resurfacing in various locations. The mayor's 100% right. This is a tremendous funding source for municipalities to have grant funding to basically, we pay the tax dollars, we're, we're getting a little interest in our money for a change, for us to make road improvements for the City Hackensack. Doesn't always have to be for roads, but candidly, it's a great shot in the arm to get a little extra money wherever we can to fix the roads we have. So I have a sneaking suspicion that this may be supported by the mayor and council for approval, and there's a resolution, to my knowledge, prepared. Debbie, correct?
Yes, there's a resolution.
Okay.
So we're going to use, again, this year, most of it for road resurfacing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Was there a list of the streets yet? I know I saw one earlier somewhere, but.
I am making it right now.
Was it in this?
I don't know if I found that it's way into your packet or not.
All right, I, I'd seen it on something else already, but.
If not, I will certainly make sure it's emailed to all the council members. But if it makes the list, you know it needed to be fixed, because we have, we have some mammoth potholes in the city.
Oh, you're not kidding. It's amazing how they, how fast that can happen, too.
Well, one day it's snowing, the next minute 70, it definitely brings some challenges to keep the road patch or coal patch in the road and the holes so we can get them extra improved.
Do you going to get another company to help you, the same company that you led here?
We are out to get quotes effective tomorrow to hire an outside company to do basically section repairs of big sections.
Yeah, the company that went there last year did a pretty good job.
And we're going to contact them again and take quotes from them. I don't remember the name off the top of my head, but we are going to be.
Last year, it was D and L W.
D and L, that's it. So we're going to go out, get quotes, solicit for three, Price is Right, off we go to the races. We're going to get started on these potholes.
Right.
Right away.
A pothole by Clinton and Terror still there. Big one.
I said it. I'll follow up on it. Last.
Let me, just before we go on, because we're talking about grants, yesterday, I just wanted to make everybody aware. I mean, I went to, I met with Congressman Gottheimer, was invited up by Mayor Burkner from Westwood. I ran up there, I can't think of, Lisa Swain, the Fair Lawn mayor, and the Paramus mayor were there as well, but he's, he's got a new program he's using. We've been, Hackensack's been using it for a while. I guess it's called the 1033, government, where we get equipment and stuff of that nature through the government. It's available for almost nothing.
Army surplus.
If anything, it's, sometimes it's free. I know we, Hackensack is one of what they call the heavy hitters. We've, since we've been in the program, we've gotten 1.4-something million dollars in equipment back into the city. These are things we would have been paying for. These are items we use.
Right.
And these are items that fortunately, you know, not having to purchase. purchase them, that stays, that money stays in the taxpayers' pockets, which is, you know, his whole, his slogan is, you know, clawing back the money, because it's harder and harder to get our money back from, from Washington. And he brings up a point, New Jersey, as a state, gets 33 cents on the dollar back from Washington, and Mississippi gets $4.38 back. He calls them the, I can't remember what he calls it, but it's not a nice term, anyway. Basically, but we're, we're funding them. We're getting nothing back for our, for our money, and this is one way we get something back. It's why he kind of like instituted, he didn't institute the program, but he's really taken it to a new level. So I want to make sure our fire department and police department, because a lot of this stuff is NTPW. I mean, Paramus, it was a, Paramus, Westwood had a brand-new tree truck, brand-new. I think they got it for a dollar, just needed a paint job. It was like a 2012. It was like barely used, for nothing. So some of these things that we're buying, we need to make, we need to make sure our guys are looking for them, so. And they've done a pretty good job.
Frank McCall has done a yeoman's job.
And I gave, I gave the PD and the HFD kudos there yesterday for, you know, getting-
What happened is that sometime they listed, and you had to be right there, because a lot of people, they-
You've got to be on it.
Right.
It's a game, but the amount of generators we've had, we've got.
We also have-
You have to dedicate one person. Frank is a police officer, so sometime, you know, 90% of the time, he's in the road. And if we have somebody that's sitting in front of that terminal, and the moment that they see something that we need, boom.
Be right on his phone. That's it.
We, we have several pickup trucks that we use that we've, we had the outside appearance of it, but when you figure the price of a pickup truck is $40, $50,000, but we knew, and we're, we're investing a paint job and a new decal on it, and we get seven, eight years.
The other thing we found out yesterday, if you take the vehicles to Bergen Tech's auto body shop, they paint them for free.
Right.
So it's like, you know, it's found equipment, so. Sorry, I just wanted to add that in, because it tied into the grants.
Last on my list, one second, is that we sent to the mayor and council the policy for snow removal. The ordinance will remain as it is. We have referenced the city codes in it. We want to make sure that they were correct. I believe even Mr. Kleiman gave us a cursory review. One of the facts that we wanted to make sure that was clean in the policy was the fact that the streets will be cleaned after the storm by following the street sweeping schedule. There's always been some controversy that people call up and complain and say, you know, the street sweeper didn't go through today, and there's no parking there. Well, that provides the opportunity for the city, for snow, for street sweeping, or for tree trimming, or any other maintenance. So we're, we're starting to migrate away from, it's just for street sweeping.
We should take that off all the signs.
And we should change, we should change the signs and migrate that it is for street maintenance, and leave that whole street sweeping out, so we don't get these desperate phone calls from people, say, you know, my street didn't get swept. Well, it didn't get swept today, but that didn't mean it was going to happen on the next rotation, but there are other things. Because with those streets clear, the required and necessary street tree pruning needs to be done, the jetting of catch basins, obviously, winter operations, we need to either plow those streets, or salt those streets, or have some ability for homeowners, while we're cleaning curb-to-curb both sides to move to the opposite side. So all of these are very perfunctory, but they need to be in place. So I would make the suggestion at some point, not immediately, one of these days when we come back to this ordinance, we need to change this from street sweeping to street maintenance and just kind of-
But what would be the difference? Time frame, it would be the same.
It'll be exactly the same, but I don't want residents to get all caught up on the fact that it's only street sweeping. That's the only sole purpose of it, because the truth is, there is a function of this whole maintenance that seems to escape some. Just a thought. It's, it's really just a terminology thing, but as things progress-
Well, if we could get like a sticker label that maintenance would cover the word sweeping, you could just slap them on there.
I would leave it the same. Street sweeping, you don't support the park. And it's up to the city, whatever we want to do. We want to do the street sweeping that day or no? We've got to go and take care of the trees.
But what he's saying is, for a few labels, he could save himself some grief, so my point was-
It's up to him. He's got to make the call.
Maybe. I don't know if I'll save myself anything, but we are trying to make it better. And I think that, in all fairness, I heard very few complaints from people the last snowstorm. I think our DPW, and I think Joe Aglima, and the guys down there have really done a nice job.
They did a good job.
And, and we seem to be progressively, is it perfect? No. I don't know if it ever, you could use those words in the same sentence, but we are progressing to address the needs, responsibilities, and residents' requests for service in a timely fashion.
Well, the moment that you don't hear complaint, that means that we are doing better.
Well, I'm sure people like on roads like Prospect and Summit are realizing that we're sticking to our guns, we mean business, so.
And we're hearing, I mean, I wasn't hearing, Leo, we heard the other day, too, a lot of positive feedback about the traffic light on Beach and Prospect.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, even folks that were like, oh, they weren't sure. I mean, everybody seems to be thinking it's made a big difference there.
Yeah.
They're very happy about it, so that was another positive thing that was done.
And if there is nothing else, that would complete the city manager's agenda for the Cal meeting tonight.
In that case, I will then need a motion to open to the public.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, and you will have three minutes. Hello, sir, how are you?
How are you? Dr. Sassen, 261 Euclid Avenue, Hackensack. I'm here to ask the council, to urge them to put the question on the school ballot for the next month, paving the way for an appointed school board. As you probably know, only a few hundred residents vote on the school budget every April. So a small, a very small minority of the city residents vote for, for the board members and approve the budget. Last year, only 341 residents, including mail-in ballots, approved the $81.2 million tax levy. It's really, it's really unbelievable. And yet, the residents pay 45% of their property tax bill goes to school taxes. They don't seem to be aware of it, or they don't care about it. So I know that we're going to be backing three candidates for the school board next month, but since, you know, we have like over 20,000 registered voters here, and you have basically a school system that's run by a few hundred people, you know, for the votes of a few hundred people. It just seems, it just seems that if, you know, that if you had an appointed school board, and since the majority of the voters approved your election, then, you know, basically, those school board members would be chosen by the majority of the residents, so to speak. And if you're going to be paving any streets, Euclid Avenue between Passaic-
Hey.
...and Summit.
I think you're on the list, Mr. Sassen. I'm pretty sure.
I don't know how you, you know, I don't know how you drum up interest in the school election. It doesn't seem, I've lived here for 10 years and-
There's an irony here, and I'm, do you have more? I don't want to take up your-
No, no, I don't.
I defer a couple questions to the city attorney, because we've also looked at this, we questioned it, and unfortunately, I don't even think this council could do that. It can only be done through the school board. Whoever's holding control at the time, if in fact, it's like now it's an elected board, only the school board could change it to an appointed board. If in fact, it was an appointed board, only the council could change it to an elected board, and I'll defer to council to see if I'm right or not.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. I mean, there is another option. Members of the public can seek to start a petition drive, and if they get a sufficient number of signatures, they can require the matter to be placed on the ballot. It can't be done unilaterally by anyone. All this council could do, or the school board could do in this case, as you said, if it was an appointed board, you could adopt a resolution to put it on the ballot. The school board, certainly, you could go to them and say, I believe we should be appointed, an appointed board, and you should put a resolution to allow the voters to have that decision in November. Should go to them. Or you can exercise your rights as a citizen, get enough of your fellow citizens to sign a petition, and that would force it to be on the ballot in November, whether or not the school board wanted to do that or not.
Do we know what the percentage of the, what you need for petitions?
I'm guessing, I don't have the statute in front of me, I, most of them say it's generally like 10% of the people who cast their votes in the previous General Assembly election, which would have been in 2017, of course, when the governor's election was up. I believe that statute's similar. What that number is is something you'd have to go to the clerk's office at the county to find out.
This is a legal opinion that Leo loaned me, that the city got in 2016. I think it's about 15% of the-
That's what I said.
Yeah, maybe. I don't have the-
Voters from the previous election. This also seems to indicate that the council has the power to put the question on the ballot, so.
That's the one you reviewed.
Yes, I, I've reviewed that. I believe that is not an accurate assessment, and I have no belief that this council has the authority to unilaterally put a question onto the ballot to go from an elected to an appointed school board. I don't believe that's correct. You know, unfortunately, it'd be nice to have that option if that was something the council wanted to consider, but that's just not the way that the statutory scheme provides.
Thank you.
I just want to bring up one point, and I agree that the voter turnout is dismal, to say, you know, to say the least. 300 and how many?
241, the latter.
341 residents.
All right. Out of 20,000 voters, 341 people.
23,000.
But the irony, here's the irony of that. If you tried to take away the rights of those 341 people to vote, I bet you'd have 1,000 people lined up outside protesting it, so that's, that's the irony of it. Yeah. Next, please.
I used to be at 390 Park Street. I was at 391 for 40 years, and currently in Alpine Drive, Paramus. I substitute taught at Hackensack High School after I had a law degree from New York Law School and a degree in psychology from George Washington University Law School in Washington, DC. I was on the internet recently, and I noticed that George Shulz and Hassan II met, and it was covered in the Spanish newspaper, which is rather interesting, because I mentioned last time that our former mayor, Ziza, was stationed in Morocco, and he was arrested when he landed there. Hassan's father was Sultan at that time, later occupied the kingship, and his son, Hassan II, of course, became the king. Hassan, I think, was born around 1929, about 10 years before May, and of course, he would be equal in age when I landed there. And I recall, and there's on the internet, on YouTube, many tours of Morocco, and they were very familiar to me. Quite obviously, the snake charmers, quite obviously, the streets that were about six feet wide, if you can imagine a six-foot-wide street. A tour down a six-foot-wide street is something that you would recall. Also, Morocco had the oldest university in the world, and there were some other issues. Of course, Hassan II built a very large religious mosque, and I believe when I was in Washington, I communicated with Hassan II because of our prior meetings. I always had some difficulties with regard to the distinctive way in which Westerners thought compared to a North African king. The issue here is, I have three seconds, two, one, signing off.
Thank you, sir. Have a wonderful evening. Anybody else in the public like to speak? Seeing no one, I need a motion to close.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You're welcome. Okay. Need a motion to go into closed session, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee, whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. And whereas the mayor and council wishes to discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, and acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days, or at such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality.
I have a workers' compensation matter. The claimant is Clarence Brown to discuss with you. I also have a lease issue that I'll need to discuss with you, but I don't think it's appropriate to describe that publicly.
I also want to talk about the agreement case. I'll put that on there.
Okay.
All right.
And any other cases that we happen to raise, we will announce after the closed session.
Okay, everybody, we see you at 8 o'clock. Welcome to Hackensack City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk?
We need a motion to adjourn the closed-
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the council of the hall.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.